Ladies and gentlemen, welcome everyone to the January, I'm sorry, April 1st, 2014, Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present, I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin the meeting, I'd like to invite to the microphone here Freddie Fogel? Fogel?
Fogel.
Fogel, who is a 5th grade student from Sharpsburg Elementary. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Freddie, can you introduce who you brought with you today?
I brought my principal, Mr. Hinch, and I brought my mom, Jennifer.
Hi, Mr. Hinch. Hi, Mom. Thank you for bringing Freddie here today. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What do you like to do when you're in school or not in school?
I play baseball and I play basketball. My instrument, I play the saxophone.
Saxophone. My son plays the saxophone. It's a great instrument. Good for you. And what's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math. Good for you. I have never, did I tell you what to say? I did not. Well, thank you Freddie and thank you Mom. Thank you, Mr. Hinch. We appreciate it and we wish you every success for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have guests they'd like to introduce today? No? We'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, second by Mrs. Fisher, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion or any amendments? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes 7 to 0 and the student member concurs. Approval of minutes?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of minutes from a closed session held on Tuesday, March the 18th, 2014, and we also had a set of minutes from the business meeting conducted on the same date. I would like to move for approval.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Ridenhour for approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, amendments, or discussion on the minutes? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, sir. I have two on page 79. Line 12, the sentence begins, "Mr. Ridenhour noted," and I believe there should be a "not." It should be "would not" cover. And the other is the amount further down, sort of in the middle of the page, says $2,500. I believe that should be $25,000.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend the minutes with those two amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion on Mrs. Williams' amendment? Everybody had a chance to see the line that she's suggested amending? Okay. If there are no further questions, all those in favor of Mr. Williams' amendment? Are there any opposed? Motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstention and the student member concurs. Our student member corrected me, I don't call for extensions. Senator Roberts rules. There we go. So that brings us to the question of the approval of the minutes moved by Mr. Bailey. Are there any other amendments or discussion? If not, the question's on approval of the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes 6 to 0, student member concurs with one abstention. Next is public comment. We have one individual who signed up to speak, Mr. Peter Perini. Mr. Perini, welcome and happy birthday.
Thank you.
I won't sing for you, maybe somebody else will, but it will not be I.
Share a birthday with our student representative.
I understand that. Happy birthday, Jason.
Thank you. Maybe he would sing to you. Not in that section. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. My name is Peter Perini and I'm a candidate for the Washington County Board of Education. It is a pleasure to be back here in the Center for Education Services facility. I would like to speak for a moment about technology in the classroom, but first, I just want to mention in light of the recognition today that's going to occur, I'm a proud parent of three children who were student athletes in the Washington County Public Schools. Our oldest played soccer and basketball. Our middle child played soccer and lacrosse, and our youngest played lacrosse. And I truly feel that the opportunity to play sports in school is very important. I think it creates well-rounded students, it builds characters, and I want to give my congratulations to all the students that are going to be recognized today for their achievements. In today's world of smartphones, iPads, and hotspots, it is imperative that the school system use technology in education. Students today are more technologically savvy than ever before. However, it is important to do more than simply put devices in the hands of every student. It takes information technology leadership. I applaud Dr. Wilcox for having had the vision of increasing the technological tools that the students need to learn and the teachers need to teach, but he cannot do it alone. Like any other large organization, the Washington County Public School System must have a CIO or Chief Information Officer. Of course, in the academic world, that position may go by a different name, but the role is the same, to move the organization forward in researching, developing, and implementing an information technology program for today and into the future. We are living in a world of readily available technology, and I would imagine that just about every child in the middle and high schools has some type of device, whether it be an iPhone, a Galaxy, or something else. The school system must find a way to harness that enthusiasm, to be connected, and use it to engage and help our students to learn. The approach to education in this day and age must be global, and the students need to understand the issues, especially current events, by broadening the learning experience. And once those technological resources are deployed, there must be ongoing training and support. If you give a teacher an iPad, then they need to know what you want them to do with that iPad. If you expect a school full of students to take an online test, then the system must be working to support it. So I applaud the efforts that you all have made as a school system and the school board, but I encourage and hope that you'll do more. Members of the board, Dr. Wilcox has made great strides in the area of technology in the classroom, and he needs your support to maintain that momentum. The children of Washington County deserve the best that we can offer, and that includes state-of-the-art technology. Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Perini. Any brief response to Mr. Perini's comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perini's the only person who's signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who's here who'd like the opportunity to speak? Okay, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Today, it is my great honor to introduce to many of the board members a number of student athletes who have not only excelled in their classrooms or in their chosen field of study, but also on the field of competition. I'm going to ask Mr. Wright to come forward, and he's going to read the names, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bailey if he'll be gracious enough to hand the young people their certificates of recognition, and I would appreciate it if other board members could come up and help to hang the medals around the neck of the students. In particular, Mr. Ridenhour, if you and Mrs. Brightman could come up and kind of stand by the table. Other members of you are more than welcome to come join us and help with the process. Only if you want to.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. We have the pleasure of honoring several state championship teams today, as well as some individual state champions. Our first state championship team we're going to honor today is the Smithsburg Unified Bocce Team. So if you all will stand up and I'll call your names to come forward. Robert McGaughy.
We can skip two now. Sarah Duckworth.
Sarah Duckworth. Kayla Huntsberry. Ashley Haller. Courtney Wells. Alexa Canode. One more round of applause for the Smithsburg Bocce Team, please. Next up, we have the Williamsport High School Unified Bocce Team, who won the gold in the 2014 Washington County and Maryland State Championships. If you all stand, starting with Rebecca Sullivan. Travis Stockdale. Justin Bowers.
Grace not here, Travis not here, Faith not here, so we're going to Justin Bowers.
Rachel Rao. Zach Loveless. Caitlin Black. Nova Ballard. Josh Reader.
Nova's here. She's next. Then Josh, then skip two. Colin Osborne. Team captain Travis Kendall.
Before the Williamsport Team leaves, please one more round of applause. Among our state championship teams, we also have the North High High School Wrestling Team with us today. Gene Balcita. J.D. McCoy. Tom Milner. That group represents our 12th grade wrestlers. Moving on to 11th grade, Dylan Brown. Aaron Dobson. Coleman McCos. That group represents our 11th grade wrestlers. 10th grade wrestler Connor Almany. That represents our 10th grade wrestlers. Once again, a round of applause for the North High Wrestling Team, state champions. Our final team recognition for the day is the Smithsburg Indoor Track Team. Will the track team move forward, Kyle? Just one second.
Well, we want to honor all of our athletes. I wanted to share something. The North High Wrestling Team is, they're going out the door, if the cameras upstairs could get a shot. Guys, just turn around and look, all of these young men are, and, all these young men, most of the young men are wearing a tie today. A lot of that comes from Coach Greg Slick, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about Coach Slick. Many of you on TV may not recognize him because he's lost a little facial hair. Thanks to these young men, I saw your video on YouTube, Coach, and the shaving was quite intense. I also want to just say this, this team has a cumulative GPA of 3.45. Oftentimes, people don't think about that when they think about wrestling and football teams. I want to salute you for your scholarship in the classroom and for your commitment to studies, as well as to your prowess as wrestlers. That is, I think, just tremendous, and so thank you very much.
Smithsburg Indoor Track. Kyle Bywaters. Micah Danyo. Adam Dwyer. Kyle Ebersol. Zachary Garvey. Garrett Gaffier. Keith Hart. Dan Passwa. Taylor Whited. Coach T.J. Hood. Tara Kinnable.
So, I'm also going to say something about the Smithsburg Track Team. Not only have you guys excelled on the track and in the field, I know that Coach puts a particular emphasis on your academics, and this team has a cumulative 3.40 GPA. Again, guys, thank you so much for your effort in the classroom. Thank you for being young men that this community can look up to. Have a great day and thank you for your service to the school system.
And finally today, we have individual champions to recognize. There are three of them here with us today. If they'll stand and come forward. State champion in the shot put, Caleb Cardone. 55-meter hurdles Maggie Sullivan.
That brings us to the first item under New Business for Consent Agenda.
I have a little exercise this morning. Eight procurement items on the agenda for your consideration this afternoon. First item is school furniture for Bestrow Elementary School. These specifications were developed with input from the purchasing, facilities, and curriculum departments and supervisors, and I can attest that Ms. Chrissy Backtow, the principal of Bestrow Elementary School, has been spending quite a bit of time in the purchasing department, helped us make this recommendation. The selection of the furniture in the bid was based upon creating a collaborative and welcoming learning environment for students at the school. We looked at pricing, delivered inside the building and installed, as well as a truck shipment with our own staff assisting with the offloading and placement of the pieces, and we're recommending a mixed group of delivery scenarios here. The allowance of purchasing some of the furniture as a truck shipment is providing cost savings to the project. This particular bid is not comprehensive in that it doesn't include some of the other furniture items that we have yet to purchase for Bestrow Elementary School. The bid is recommended to be awarded to the six companies, who in aggregate total, the orders would come to $208,077.44. The next two items on the agenda are for making security improvements at about 14 of the school board's elementary schools and, excuse me, 13 elementaries and one of our middle schools. These projects are sort of like mini general construction projects. Each is unique and involves a variety of construction improvements, primarily to the front entrances of these schools. Those bids are recommended for award, the bid for the eight schools to Calis Contractors, and the bid for six schools to Milton Stamper Builders. Those are both local contractors who have experience with projects for the school system. The next bid, it's the fourth item on our agenda, is for some exterior door and window glazing work at Springfield Middle School. The project will replace glazing in 168 window openings totaling a linear fee of about $1,600 linear feet. Work will be performed when school's not in session, and this bid is recommended to be awarded to the lowest bidder, Home Right of Baltimore, at a cost of $162,697. The fifth item on the agenda is a contract renewal. In March of 2010, the board approved the award of the bid for office paper and envelopes. The bid does provide for price increases twice a year throughout the contract period. We have incurred some price adjustments through, since the board approved the bid back in 2010. Last year, we spent $417,081. Actually, I need to correct that fiscal year to date, we've spent $417,081 on the supplies that we've procured from these two vendors that are recommended for renewal. Next item on the packet, a seed drill for the agricultural program for Clear Spring High School. A modern seed drill that is operational will enhance the opportunity to teach modern planting techniques to students enrolled in that program at Clear Spring High School. The seed drill is recommended for purchase from Smiths Implants of Mercer'sburg, Pennsylvania, at a price of $32,047.40. The seventh item is a requisition for 50 Lenovo laptop computers with warranty. These are part of the routine computer replacement program. And the final item on the board's agenda this afternoon is the renewal of our contract with AT&amp;T for our cellular telephone services. And we have been taking advantage of some good pricing that Fairfax County Public Schools had when they bid the contract, and they just recently renewed it. Staff is satisfied with the services and the phones from AT&amp;T, and so we're recommending we do the same. We continue to utilize that contract for the next year. Any questions for me? Any questions for me this afternoon?
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, excuse me. I will recommend approval of the materials that have been outlined for us by the Director of Purchasing.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright now. Discussion or questions? Mrs. Fisher, I know I had one, then I'll cut you.
I've got a couple of questions on different bids. The, first on the furniture for Bester. Will all the furniture be new for Bester? Or some of it being transferred from the old school?
We are identifying right now the furniture items at existing Bester that are in such condition that we want to transfer those to the new building. Boyd and I actually are going out tomorrow morning to visit 820 Commonwealth and to do kind of a comprehensive review of what surplus furniture might be available to offer to the other schools between 820 and the existing Bester building.
On the laptop computers, they are replacements, not additional. What happens to the laptops that are replaced? Do they get turned in for reimbursement?
I hesitate to speak for it. I know that they are usually not in such a condition to be redeployed after they get turned back in.
We've been fairly successful at securing about six, seven, eight years out of our laptops. And normally when they take them out of service, they go into the recycling program. And I've forgotten how many tons of recycling we do every year, but it's substantial with our electronics.
And finally, on the renewal contract for the cellular phones. Will this be for all cellular phones that WCPS uses? Or just, just say for the main office or schools?
Oh, no, it's all, it's all module, mobile device phones, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Horsman?
I just had a question about the cafeteria tables for Bester. On the itemized page, it has number thirty, it says cafeteria tables ten. And it says with benches. Are these attached? Is this like a, is that the best, is that the best purchase for schools when we have adults coming in who come to visit and the tables are almost unusable by anybody taller than three feet?
For the day?
And also the modesty issue because I know that some of the high schools have those bench attached tables, which I don't really think they're in the best interest of the use that we have for our cafeterias and any kind of lunch also.
I know there are particular challenges with the cleanup of the cafeterias and the ease with being able to fold these tall tables together and set them aside. We, in the past, I've tried to procure at least one table of adult height for staff members to eat at in the cafeterias. The difference in height on the cafeteria tables is only a couple of inches between elementary and high school. But I do agree, it is, it does make it challenging for an adult to sit in that space. I know the media centers more and more are being used for the sort of adult meeting areas within schools.
I was at Paramount for their spring festival. And they, of course, served food in the cafeteria. And so they were extremely uncomfortable for most of the adults who tried to squeeze in with the elementary. And I was thinking even if we had the tables, the long tables, that could be folded, but still had chairs to go with them. It would be a far better use of our money than to keep buying those which really have to be totally removed when we have some kind of presentation.
It's a challenge because the schools have limited storage. And we do try to buy the fold-away metal folding chairs for presentations. But then there tends to be a requirement for storage. So it is a balancing act in terms of the functionality.
Entitled "School Discipline and Academic Success." In September of 2012, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education submitted comments to the state board with regard to the report. And then in April of 2013, the state board appointed a work group to study this issue. In June of 2013, the work group submitted its report to the state board. And then in July of 2013, the state board of education adopted proposed regulations. And they appear in the Code of Maryland Administrative Regulations, which we'll refer to from time to time as COMAR. Once those proposed regulations were issued, our board conducted discussions in September of 2013, October of 2013. And then in November of 2013, the board sent its formal written comments to the state board of education. In December of 2013, the state board decided to extend the time period for the submission of comments on the proposed regulation. In December of 2013, the president of the state board issued a letter because there was a great deal of concern across the state about the implications of the regulations in certain language. The state, the president of the state board made it very clear that local control was encouraged and that there should be reasonableness in imposing school discipline. There was also a question as to whether a student who was disruptive had to be returned to his or her school. And the state board president went on to provide further guidance on that particular matter, that once again, there should be discretion and that you should be focused on school security. To pick up on the timeline, in January of this year, the state board did adopt the final set of regulations. And then there was guidance that was issued in January by the U.S. Department of Education. And then in February of this year, the state board issued another publication entitled "Best Practices." That was followed by another publication that was submitted by the U.S. Department of Education. All the board members were provided with copies of those documents. And the policy committee studied each of those publications very carefully. The policy committee conducted several meetings, as noted, during the period from January of this year up to March 25th. The new policy is set forth in four distinctive sections. The purpose of the policy, background, definitions, policy statement, and procedures. The purpose of the policy is very succinct. That is to establish the principles and objectives of student discipline with an importance and emphasis on student learning and maintaining a safe and orderly environment. The background section provides that in, by the beginning of the school year, 2014, 2015, all local boards of education are required to have a new disciplinary code in place. The third part of the new policy, which is entitled "Definitions," provides that the key terms are to be set forth in the administrative regulation. And finally, in Part Four of the new proposed policy, Part A, which is entitled "Policy Statement," and I'll provide an overview of that, indicates very clearly that a student's access to his or her free public education should not be disrupted by the behavior of other students. That discipline is not to be punitive. That student discipline is to be implemented fairly. And that learning and student success are best achieved in an environment that is safe and orderly. The Part B of the new policy, which is entitled "Procedures," provides the superintendent with guidance as to the types of issues and matters that should be addressed in the administrative regulation and is to be promulgated by the superintendent. Those regulations should address the code of conduct for students, the procedures that are be followed when a student is suspended or expelled, the procedures that apply when there is an appeal, and the types of appropriate behavioral supports that are to be in place to assist students. The, the regulations should also address the collection and monitoring of student discipline data and the procedures to be followed to provide ongoing professional development for school staff. We wanted to provide you with an outline of the proposed schedule going forward. We anticipate, well, there'll be an opportunity for public comment during the period of April and May of this year. And we anticipate that on May 6th, the second reading will be presented to the board of education for its final approval. By June, the middle of June, the new administrative regulation must be promulgated. And by July 1st, critical information must be provided so that it can appear in the student handbook, which is provided to students and parents across the school system. During the period of July and August of this year, the professional development will be fully implemented across the system district-wide. What the policy committee is requesting of the board is a consideration of two motions. The first is to rescind the current regulation. And I believe there'll be some timeframe on that. And the second motion will be to approve the first reading of the proposed new administrative regulation. And at this point, we're open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of the rescission of current policy J.G. entitled "Student Discipline" to become effective July 1, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Bright. Is there any discussion on this first motion?
Just, just briefly, a clarification, if it's needed. The reason we put the timeline on this is so existing discipline policy would apply to the remainder of the school year. So there isn't confusion because there are still a few pieces that haven't fallen into place on what we have to do as far as the code of conduct and the model. So again, I think it gives consistency to our students and their families.
And just for my sake, in a parliamentary point of view, rescinding a policy requires a first and a second read. Is that correct, Mr. Trot?
You know, we, in the past, we've done it in one motion. But, you know, clearly if we come back on, on May the 6th, we'll do that for clarification purposes to take two motions.
I think it's good practice, the same principle applies. It's give the public a chance to see what we're considering eliminating and then give them the opportunity to comment. So my intention would be to, when we bring back the discipline regulation for its secondary, we'd also bring back this rescission for its secondary as well. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's motion to rescind the policy? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. There are another motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed new policy J.K. entitled "Student Discipline." Again, if it become effective on July 1, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher and second by Mrs. Bright. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Bright?
Several friendly suggestions. Again, overall, I think this is an excellent approach to following our new policy on making policy. And I think it worked well in this. A very important policy, just a couple. And again, I'll go through them as quickly as possible. Under purpose, on page two of four, the purpose of policy J.G. is to establish the principles and objectives of student discipline. A possibility of inserting there the statement that was made in Dr. Duke's letter that included, I think, some philosophies that we can all support would be to ensure reasonableness, local discretion, and common sense. And I believe those were the three points in Dr. Duke's letter. So I would offer that as a suggestion. Going down to number two, background, D. Allow for discretion. Would there be, would it be useful to continue to use the word "local discretion"? Moving to four, three, the policy statement and procedures, page three of four. Under three, "Discipline is not intended to be punitive, but rather reflective of a philosophy of positive behavioral reinforcement." And this is certainly debatable. But there's a term that seems to be used more and more in this field, and that's restorative justice. And would we want to put that in there so that as the superintendent and staff are formulating regulations, that, that might inform some of those regulations or procedures? Number four, under B. Educational services and/or the appropriate behavioral support services that are to be provided. I think that becomes the concern that we had with the state language is whether we provide services in-house or whether we provide access to service. So a suggestion of a redo would be appropriate behavioral support services that are available to a student. And again, some wordsmithing that just seems to maybe give us a broader discretion as to how we provide access to that service. Under five, where it talks about arrest on school premise and delinquent acts. I know that under the federal guidelines, the school resource officer's role has been diminished. I don't know whether we need to be responding to that federal guideline that defines how the school resource officer performs his or her duties. So I don't know if we should mention that there. I, okay. Six, where we talk about the liaison between a teacher and a suspended or expelled student. It says here, "student's parent." I believe it should be "student, comma, parent," or guardian because I think the liaison is responsible for assignments to the student. So I, it's not just the student's parent, but I think the students included individually in that. So I just offer that. Do you mind if I keep going?
Your honor, roll, Mrs. Bright.
On the last page, four of four, the, number seven, the procedures to be followed to collect, monitor, analyze, and report. And maybe this is the wrong place, but I would think as a board, we may want an, an annual report to the board as well as to MSDE. We would want to have some information on the reports so we can see how the policy is working or not. Number 10, when we talk about making a student or parent or guardian making restitution for damages. If I'm not mistaken, that's in that first draft of the Code of Conduct. And it makes it very, very difficult for us to request and enforce any type of restitution process. So I don't know whether we just leave that hanging until we get the Code of Conduct from MSDE. I think they're meeting, what is the end of April? Twenty-second? I just, from what, my first read of the Code of Conduct, it's, it's going to be very difficult to enforce any type of restitution. So those are my.
Mrs. Fisher?
In responding to Mrs. Brightman's suggestions, and there are some good suggestions here. Under Part Four, B, both items five and 10, I think what you were getting at would be addressed in the regulations for both of those items.
Yes, they should be. The only other item there that I didn't mention is, again, under the federal guidelines, the teacher is now the first point. A teacher making a referral to the principal or assistant principal is now going to be held responsible for that. held responsible for that first point of referral. So again, I don't know if we need to mention whether we agree with that in the policy, and then it's, our intent is then, that informs the regs or not. I just mentioned that.
I think most of what ended up in 4B, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Trotta or my colleagues on the Policy Committee, most of what's in 4B, we lifted straight out of the regulations that say, these are the things that you must address.
Correct.
So.
State regulations?
Right. The new state regulation says specifically that local boards need to address in policy or regulation these items. And that's where we pulled those 10.
And I don't disagree with the.
I'm just giving you background on how we got there.
Yeah, and my concern is, this may point to a misalignment between federal guidelines and state regs. So whether we let case study decide that for us, or whether we are proactive, and I don't know, Mr. Trotta, if you have any suggestions, but I know the federal guidelines speak to a lot of these in a different way, so I don't know how that aligns.
What we'll do is that we certainly will study these issues and reconcile some of your comments with the Code of Conduct, which is just in draft form and hasn't been formally adopted. And we certainly will look at the federal guidelines as it relates to school resource officers. But as Dr. Harding has noted, what we did was, in Part B, was we took that directly from the administrative regulation that the State Board has approved. So it may be that there may be some.
Some tension between those.
Inconsistency on their part. I think that one of the comments that the Board submitted to the State Board is that they felt there was a need to look at the Student Code of Conduct and the proposed changes on student discipline together. And then, for that very purpose, to make sure that there was consistency between the two documents. But the State Board elected instead to proceed with the changes in the disciplinary code first, and as we've indicated, they've just issued the Code of Conduct for public comment.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions?
Just a brief comment on the last item, number 10, on restitution. I would encourage the committee not to discard that item, but to perhaps wordsmith it in a different way. I can't see a vicious person or a student tearing up a $600 computer and not being held accountable for it.
Are there other comments? This is all good discussion. This is a lot like the discussion we had in the Policy Committee, is what do we simply mirror from the state regs? What do we include to put our own take on it? And it's a lot of the same sorts of discussions we had. So thank you both for the input. I think it'll help make the policy better. Any other comments? If not, the question's on Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve the first read of policy JG. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us back to the superintendent's report.
So we have two items today that we'd like to share. And as you remember, the last time we were together, we talked a little bit about the testing regimen that young people now go through. And so we're going to update you on that transition as we move from the old assessments to the new assessments.
Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Harding, members of the Board. I want to share with you some charts that were given to us by MSDE to outline what the students will be transitioning from our current HSA system into the PARC, High School Assessment This first slide is the high school assessments that students will be eligible to take, and this would depend on what courses they're in, as well as using these for graduation requirements. This first one is for our current ninth graders, so you can see that they start with a lot of HSA tests that they are going to be taking, and then moving into PARC, depending on what their courses are. So it includes PARC English 10, PARC English 11, as well as PARC courses, or PARC assessments for different math levels. The HSA for Biology and HSA for Government will remain throughout their careers.
Maureen, would you speak to how long we think a PARC assessment test might take? Because I know there's a lot of discussion, debate about the timeframe of these assessments.
The PBA, which is the performance-based assessment for the English, the literacy part, is a three-day test. The field test has it at about 80 minutes, 80 to 120 minutes, for the first two days, and then about 75 minutes for the last day. So roughly five hours, four hours? And that would be in the March, that's the 75% of the way through the school year. And then the end-of-year for the literacy would be two days of testing, also about an hour and a half, and that would be 90% of the way through the school year. Students would be taking in English, especially high school students would be taking that, as well as our 3 through 8 graders would be taking that. For the math, the math PBA, which is again in March, is a two-day test. It's running about an hour and 10 minutes for each day. And then, taking the end-of-year assessment, it would be the same two days and about the same timeframe for both of those. So students would have nine days of testing throughout the school year, between the PBA, the end-of-year, the math, and the English.
But they would not be in testing for the fall. I think that's where some of the confusion is coming, when we say nine days of testing. There'd be nine days that tests are given, but it would not consume the entire school day.
Yes, sir.
A large fraction, but not the entire school day.
And they've also designed it so that if we have a student, we can also do two days of testing in one day if we need to. So if there's a reason that a child needs to be out of, they can, as long as they have a long enough break in between, they can actually do the same testing on one day, so that it's a longer day for the student, but it would be a little bit more compact. So that is allowed on the PARC, whereas for MSA, that has not been allowed, that MSA, they have to take it on two different days. So this would be our current eighth graders, so this is our students who are entering high school next year. You can see the difference is that they will be taking the PARC English 9, so that's the one test that's different between the two. They will take mostly PARC English and math assessments, and then they would continue to take the Biology and the Government assessments as a graduation requirement. These would be the high school assessment requirements. So these are what our students need to pass in order to get their diploma. This would be students who are entering ninth grade this year, so are current ninth graders. So you can see that current ninth graders are going to have the HSA Algebra, HSA Biology, HSA Government, and then they would be required to take the PARC 10 assessment as a graduation requirement. Students that are in 10th grade or above will continue to take all of the HSAs, and they will not see any difference in their academic graduation requirements. For students who are entering ninth grade next year, so this is our current eighth graders, they will be taking the PARC Algebra test, except for our students who are currently enrolled in Algebra. They will be taking the HSA Algebra and be allowed to get their graduation requirement because they're taking the class earlier. And then again, they'll be taking all of the PARC English, and then the HSA Government and Biology as graduation requirements.
Mrs. Brightman?
Anyone else?
I just couldn't tell, Mr. Bailey, he's going to ask a question.
On the two tests, at the 75% mark and at the 90%, does that give us enough time to get results back from the first test to help us inform a student, or do remediation, or anything prior to than the 90%?
My understanding is they're hoping to get us, hoping to get results back between the two, but I think it's designed so that the PBA is, would include more of your constructed response questions, so that when they have time to grade those, by the time that the student takes the end-of-year assessment, which would be more of the structured response, that a student will get the feedback earlier as to whether they passed the test or not, rather than waiting until August or September. They should be able to get their results back earlier in the year, so that you could schedule them better, perhaps, and use the numbers a little bit earlier.
And these really are summative assessments, in the sense that they're not designed to help an individual student in the context of that year. We can use that data later to perhaps schedule or tailor instruction from year to year, but for that specific student, that 75% mark really isn't being offered as a way to help them be more successful at the 90% mark.
So the purpose of having the test at the 75% rather than, say, 50% is?
It really goes back to what Maureen was saying. It gives them more time to grade an assessment that doesn't have one right answer. We're moving away from the kind of bubble test, where you'd run it through a Scantron machine or some kind of, and pop a score out. These will be extended responses, where whoever is grading the test will be looking at, not only did the student get the right answer, but was the process they used to get there?
I know that the new task force that was set up by legislation this year, part of their task has been to set up a transition from HSA to PARC. Do we have any, it's probably too early, any clues whether our process will be somewhat similar, or will we be here? And they report out in September, so could there be an alignment issue between MSDE and the Legislature and what we're doing here locally?
I believe we're following MSD's lead with this, so I believe that we're going to be doing what MSD suggests that we do. We're not.
And the Legislature may mandate to MSDE what to do, so we're just sort of, stay tuned. Okay.
Yes.
The flexibility waiver that MSDE sent to DOE, Department of Ed, what, a month ago now, to delay implementation of the assessment as part of the teacher principal evaluation until 16, 17. Would that apply to implementation of the high stakes nature of graduation as part of, because I know that's being asked across the street, state, that if there's a pause button for evaluation, there should be a pause button for how HSA transitions? Any?
I don't think right now there are any plans to delay the impact of the assessments on students.
So it's not high stakes for teachers or principals, but it is still high stakes for students?
I think at this point in time, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, I'm like UPS. I'm interested in logistics. The old administrator in me recognizes that on any given day, when a test is administered, you're probably going to have 5% to 7% absenteeism. If they come back the next day, do you catch them the next day? Or how do they make up the test work that they missed?
One of the advantages of this assessment is that it's not unique to one grade level. So if you had a ninth grader, for an example, that missed a day, they could join a 10th grade group, and the directions would be the same. So it does give the administrators and teachers some flexibility to make up the exams. They do need to be given in order, day 1, day 2, and day 3. So we have been working with the high schools a lot, and the middle schools and the elementary schools during the field test, to sort of talk about some of those logistics, and make sure that once we get to the point where it's full operational, that they're comfortable with logistical planning and making sure that those kids are able to make it up quickly.
I see nightmares occurring for administrators and test administrators, but we live with those.
We also do have a 20-day testing window for the assessments, so there's a lot of time within that to, especially, we recommend that they do it towards the front end of the testing window, and that way they have time to make up the students who have been absent later on in the testing window, so that they're able to complete the assessment.
Everyone will have the same problem.
Just a couple of questions. Taking a look at the screen that you have up right now, so my assumption is that in order to graduate, you have to pass English 10 PARC and Algebra 1 PARC.
Correct.
As well as HSA Biology and HSA Government. Okay, go back to, and help me understand this, where it's students entering ninth grade year 2014-15, and it has the asterisks after several classes that are not graduation requirements, but it says determines college career readiness. There's two separate elements that students are going to be evaluated on, their college and career readiness. I mean, is that, that's obviously then not a graduation requirement, it just makes a determination as to whether you are college, or you graduate not be considered college and career ready, if you haven't passed the PARC exam for Algebra 2, or the PARC English 11. Is that correct, or am I misreading that?
That's correct. So the graduation requirement would be the PARC 10, English 10, and the PARC Algebra 1. And the college and career readiness, I would hope that maybe universities would start using those scores in order to maybe have their students determine, not just using SAT, which is only one test, but using a wide variety of indicators, so that we can get our kids more successful in college. So if they're doing well on the PARC English 11 and the PARC Algebra 2, hopefully, they would be then college and career ready and more successful for that next step.
Thank you. The other question I have, you mentioned that these tests are given, again, what was the timeline? There's a three-week timeline in what month?
It's that 20-day test window.
In what month?
March.
March?
For the PBA, and then May and June.
PBA.
Performance-based assessment, sorry. That mid-year one.
Okay. So from March until June, per se, you know, we have thousands upon thousands upon thousands upon thousands of high school students whose graduation may hinge on these exams, sitting around, waiting to see their scores. And you mentioned one of the reasons it's taking a little bit longer is because, you know, it's not bubble-based, it's, you've got humans looking at these assessments and making a determination as to, is the process right, as well as the answer? I have horrendous nightmares about that one. But my big nightmare is, you know, the fact that we are using humans to make this determination. And are we absolutely certain that as they look at the process, per se, that they're going to be grading it, each and every one of the evaluators going to be grading the You're talking about a pretty serious life issue.
Right.
For a huge number of children, or young adults, and we're having, you know, a whole lot of different people looking at these, the process, not the answer, but the process, and saying, okay, maybe they got the right answer, but the process isn't correct.
The two PARC that are the graduation requirements would be during their freshman and sophomore years, so they would then have an opportunity to retake those. So it's not that they would have to pass only once, or they'd have to pass once, but they could take it multiple times. I would assume that, sort of like we have with our HSA Government, which also has constructed response, that they have equality control, so that they are consistent when deeming a student passing or not passing.
I mean, I'm not. I mean, I'm not, I'm not disputing, and I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat by any stretch of the imagination, you're doing what your job is. But, you know, General Motors had quality control for 25 years, and they couldn't make a decent car. You know, so I, I have a lot of problems with, you know, quality control being the answer to something that's going to impact a child's life. You know, I'm not a big fan of this, in case you're wondering, but I'm becoming even less of a fan as we get closer to putting kids on the hot spot with these exams, and, you know. And I've seen a couple of them, and it's just one, two, or three questions. I don't have a clue what these are going to look like. I don't have a clue, you know, what kind of accommodations. You know, there was a nice young man here today, he has trouble typing, yet he's going to be on a computer trying to, you know, finish something that's going to determine whether or not he graduates, and his hands don't work real well on a computer. I mean, there's a lot, there's still a great number of things that I think have to be sorted out, and for the State Department of Education else, and anyone else, you know, the Department of Education at the federal level, to make a determination that we can't get some kind of window to sort through things, you know, that we're going to go right into this in hell or high water. I mean, I have a great deal of issue with that. It, it bothers me immensely. So, I wish you guys the best of luck, I really do, because, you know, it falls back on, on you, it falls back on the teachers, it doesn't really fall back on me, other than the fact that if the public thinks, okay, we're doing a poor job because our test scores are poor, I don't get elected, you know, which means I probably would keep a little more of my hair. So, good luck. This scares the hell out of me.
Are there other questions?
Is there, sort of related to that point, is there still a bridge plan option that comes with this? So, if a student were in their second semester of their senior year, and still hadn't passed one of the required tests, there are other ways that they can try to meet that graduation requirement?
Yes, they still will have a bridge option.
Okay. That just occurred to me while we were discussing high stakes. And I guess the last question, so a student who's in the eighth grade this year is taking Algebra, will take the Algebra HSA at the end of this year.
Yes.
If that student passes, then they've met their Algebra requirement for graduation from high school.
Yes, correct.
If the student doesn't pass, then the student would have to pass the PARC, the Algebra 1, PARC, at some point before they graduate? Or they're going to keep giving the Algebra HSA to the kids who took Algebra this year?
Since they, since they took Algebra, and assuming they pass Algebra in the eighth grade, they will be allowed to continue to take the Algebra HSA until they pass it.
Okay.
They, if...
So, students will still be given HSAs beyond this year, even in Algebra?
Yes.
I guess only in Algebra Biology and, and Government.
Government.
But Algebra only for those who took Algebra this year but didn't pass the assessment?
And then also the English HSA for students who have not yet passed it. They will still be given, we will still give that assessment until those students are able to either pass it or use the bridge option to graduate.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll have a lot of different tests going on in our high schools next year.
You sure will. Any other questions?
Just that scenario that you just related, a student is having difficulty, has passed, or has not passed, has taken the test several times. Is there a limit to the number of retakes before they're given the option of a bridge plan, or is that something along a timeline that you realize you only have so much time before graduation? How, how is that going to tease out?
There's no limit on the number of times that they can take the assessment. They have to take it at least twice and not pass it in order to be eligible for the bridge for projects. A lot of times that the schools will have them take multiple times, if, especially if they're close to a transition, so that maybe they only have to do one bridge project instead of two bridge projects, or close that they can pass it to take it multiple times. But that's really the school's decision, but they do have to, twice is the number of times that they don't pass before they are eligible to take the bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you. So, that will lead us to our second presentation of the day, and that will be a report on Thank you for joining us up here, gentlemen.
So, moving into our math mid-year update, this is again using the MAP to measure our student progress. What we looked at again was the RAI-T RIT score for math, and we compared that to the grade level mean as published by NWEA, the Northwest Evaluation Association. This, we looked at the reported values that were at or above the published mean, and then we again looked at the cohort tracking, so that we could compare the groups of students to themselves. Oops, sorry. So, this first graph is a percent of students at or above the mean. Now, this is math results as opposed to the reading results, this is math only. And to remind you that the kindergarten, first, and second grade contains an audio component, so that students use headphones in order to have part of the test delivered to them. What I'd like to draw your attention to is the change from fall to winter, this is just this year's administration, and you can see that kindergarten, grade one, grade two, and grade three went up, grade four is flat, and then grade five went up, grade six went down, grade seven went down slightly, and then grade eight came up slightly. When looking at the cohort, so this is again the students compared to themselves, as they're going throughout their career, the pre-K again was a limited sample size, this is only pre-K from Winter Street. We can see as they move from pre-K, their average RIT score goes from about 130 to winter, where they're at about 155. Our current first grade, from about 145 to about 177. Our current second graders, from about 170, 165, to about 190. Compared that to the NWEA means, you can see that slightly above or at the average. For our current third graders, going from about 180 to about 195. Our current fourth graders, gone up to about 210. Our current fifth graders. And then our current sixth graders, for comparison, so that you can see how our fifth graders are doing with our sixth graders last year. Compare this again to the NWEA mean. Drawing your attention again to that transition between second and third grade, where it goes from the audio test to the RED test. These are our middle schoolers, our current sixth graders, our current seventh graders, our current eighth graders, and then our current ninth graders for comparison for our eighth graders. Compare those again to the NWEA mean. So, when we look at our groups of students, our early elementary students, using the audio test, are above or right at the NWEA grade level mean. Moving into late elementary school, they're slightly below the mean. And then middle school students from grade six to eight are at or above the NWEA mean. We've also broken this out by disaggregated results. So, you can see here, this is for primary school, grades K through T, K through 2. This is the average RIT scores for the different groups, races in this case. They are compared to the average of the K through 2 student, which is 173.9, which is the red line. So, you can see how they compare to each other. The difference between the highest and the lowest is about 13 points on the RIT scale. When we look at our special groups, again, compared to that average RIT of 173.9, you can see for our SWDs, our LEPs, and our FARM students, where they lie. At the bottom, you can also see the sample size, so that you're able to compare how many students are taking the test. For grades 3 through 5, the difference between the highest and lowest group here is about 14. The average is 207.8 for all K through, or sorry, 3 through 5 students. Again, using the sample sizes, we made sure to look at a very large sample size as opposed to a small sample size in this case. For our special groups in grades 3 through 5, you can see again the difference. For SWDs, it's about 17 points. LEP is about 14 points, and FARM's about nine points. And then how they compare to the average score of 207.8.
I probably should have said this earlier, but you used some acronyms there.
I'm sorry.
For people who are viewing at home, we might just go back and say that the chart we looked at, looked at students with disabilities and without disabilities, limited English proficiency students, and non-limited English proficiency students. And then when we talk about FARM, we talk about students who are, who have free and/or reduced lunch price status or not. So, we looked at groups of kids who are economically challenged, we look at kids who are challenged by language, and we look at kids who had other unique abilities or disabilities.
Thank you. I forget about the viewers at home. So, for middle school, looking at the different races, the difference between these, about the highest and lowest, is about 19. The average for middle school is 227.0. Looking at our special groups, our students with disabilities, slightly below the mean of 227.0, about 21 points difference. For our limited English proficient students, a difference of about 16 points. And for our economically disadvantaged students, about 10 points difference.
Might some of these students all be in, are they uniquely identified by group, or might they be in two or more groups?
They may be in two or more groups.
Okay.
They could be in all three. So, a summary is that the special group averages are lower in all grade levels, but our economically disadvantaged groups are showing the smallest difference for all grade levels. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Just one.
Mr. Bailey?
Sure. With the directors or supervisors, the elementary MAP seemed to level off. They got to middle school, they seem to do well. Do you think that specialized math teachers have any impact on that? In middle school, you get teachers who are trained specifically in mathematics. Elementary schools, you do not. You get a wide variety, cross-section of general, and general knowledge in the teaching.
I can't speak to whether it means improved instruction in math, because they're having teachers who are, have been trained as secondary math teachers, because in reality, in, in our middle schools, we have some people who are K to 8 certified, and some who are 5 to 12. Now, certainly the 5 to 12 have probably had more training in teaching math especially, but also the students are starting to differentiate, and that we have students who by middle school are taking high school level math. So, when you are looking at averages, you might have some kids who have moved far beyond average in the type of math they're studying. So, I haven't looked at this, but I suspect that it's actually some student results that are also pulling the average up for middle school. But it's, but it's a good point that, you know, obviously having certified math teachers is going to hopefully have a positive impact on math instruction.
Just one, my beliefs, I don't know, I have nothing to prove, but just an assumption, I guess, that I make. But, you know, on, on your, your answer, you're going to have those outliers, those, those strong kids in elementary schools that are going to pull the averages up too.
Yeah, my point was that, once they get to middle school, they get to actually leave the class, leave some of their peers, and go into a class of like students, and be allowed to excel beyond the normal curriculum into the high school curriculum. That it's just an opportunity. Of course, in some of the elementary schools, they also have magnet programs and things where the same thing is true.
Right. Mr. Reiden?
Yeah, just a quick question, Matt, you probably can answer this better than anyone else. Says, and I understand we have the, the audio for the early elementary students. The late elementary seems to be a little bit of a trouble area. Says it tends to be slightly below the NWEA grade level mean. You can put a finger on anything that, I mean, other than the audio, the main, the audio output, component output, or is there something else that might?
Ms. Reidenauer, will you put your mic for that television people can't hear without that?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Again, just to repeat, I apologize. The difference between the early elementary, which has the audio, and we stay very close to the grade level mean, says late elementary students, 3 to 5, tend to be slightly below. I'm just curious, as, you know, as you guys have reviewed this data, is there anything that you can put your, your finger on that would indicate beyond the audio component as to why those grade levels tend to be slightly below?
I would think because part of it is the fact that the students do have to read, and while some of those students are struggling with literacy as well, they could have troubles reading some of those components from the test. So, that should, that could show some of the differences there. We also then look at, too, the, the, the jump of the standards and expectations from second to third and fourth, fifth are quite a large jump, so it's, you know, those kids are really starting to experience some higher level math, especially with the new Common Core.
Okay. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Semler, that, that was my question. Looking at the chart that shows the fall to winter, and, and looking at grade 4 in particular, I was wondering about what the MAP looks like at that grade level, what kind of content and skills the students are expected to have acquired.
Well, one, one thing, though, to keep in mind with that chart is, what's not necessarily mentioned here, is that the fall to the winter, the, the mean increases. So, we haven't had students that actually dropped levels, or that aren't making gains, because they're staying in pace with the mean that's rising. So, if in the fall, if the mean was 150 points, but then in the winter it's 160, the same number of kids are still reaching the mean. So, we haven't really seen a drop, we just haven't seen as much of a boost. We'd like to see the number of kids getting above that mean.
I see.
Yeah. So, I, so when looking at that, the, the fourth grade stands out, of course, but the mean has actually risen too.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many years have we been doing the MAP? Is this the third year, I'm thinking?
Second year in elementary schools, with the exception of a few of our TIF schools that piloted it for a year previous. So, some of the, the TIF schools, the TIF elementary schools.
Would have been a third year.
They're in their third year, yes.
Their third year. So, if we took on that first graph, the third grade, and went backwards, because every grade seems to be a little different, the moon's in a different phase, and a certain class just doesn't get something, and I, I understand that. So, let's say if we took our third graders or our second graders, have we actually tracked the same class to see where, again, back to Mr. Reidenauer's, that drop off between the audio and kindergarten, first, second, and then on to third, where it, you know, drops? Because I know we can say this is a literacy issue, which I think is a component of that. We changed the cut line, that's a component of it, but have we tracked some of this change by teacher? I mean, we always, I mean, there- I mean, we always, I mean, there are other people in the classroom with students, and that's called the teacher. So have we been able to do a class by class growth by teacher as well as class student performance?
Yes, that's part of how we use this for student learning objectives that are part of the new teacher evaluations, that, that's where they set their own goals at the school. The principal approves a student learning objective, and a lot of teachers, math and ELA teachers, are using this data for their, for their goals that they have to reach for the purposes of their evaluation. So we use it that way, but we also use it just to drive instruction, that it's discussed in CFP meetings, the Classroom Focused Improvement Process meetings that take place in the schools. So it's used instructionally and as evaluation goals, beyond just sort of reporting out on how we're doing as a district. It's used at the school level where it's broken down to the teacher level.
And just, would we possibly use this information to direct staffing? If one teacher might actually be better, as a first grade teacher, might be a better fit, does this sort of thing help inform staffing decisions?
Absolutely. I mean, this is obviously pretty new, but we've been using testing data, whether they were benchmark tests, HSAs, MSAs, to help us make those decisions for quite some time.
Following the trends.
As well as when you're looking at student groupings, and there are some, especially in like a fourth or fifth grade classes, where they might be doing some groupings where a teacher would take a group of kids from another classroom and work with them based on their ability to work with math and push kids in a certain level. So there is some flexible grouping in there.
Some teaming or collaborative work?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
I'd like to take a crack at the same slide that shows the fall versus, fall 2013 versus winter 2014, and come at it from a slightly different angle. I think it's slide three or so. And I think the only possible explanation for the decline is a literacy issue, right? If, at least a large part of the decline, of the difference, I won't say decline, difference between second grade and third grade results, has to be somehow connected to literacy if it's not being read to them anymore, and now they have to read the questions and comprehend them. And I certainly agree with the things that many of my colleagues and members of the staff here say about the reading being fundamental to everything that we do in learning. So I don't want anybody to misinterpret what I'm going to say as in any way disagreeing with the fundamental importance of reading. But going back to a discussion that we had when we were looking at the sample PARC test questions, one of the questions I had for both the reading, especially from his down and from his read, was about the literacy skills that were required to show proficiency in mathematics. And that if a student had some sort of a deficit with literacy, that it could mask a real talent for mathematics. I think that's what we see. Because I don't believe that these students can't perform as well mathematically between the fall, between grade three and grade two. I think from a mathematical point of view, it's there. It's that now, in order to get it out, they need literacy skills too. So that their challenges with literacy are masking other abilities in mathematics. Albert Einstein was dyslexic. If he were given an assessment like some of the assessments we give, he probably wouldn't do well on them, even in the mathematics ones, even though he was incredibly talented. There are assessments, worksheets, tests, I know, because I see them when they come home with my children, that a dozen eggs costs three dollars, twenty eggs cost four dollars and fifty cents, which is the better deal? So that's the first part of the question. The second part of the question, then, is write a letter to your friend Bobby and explain to Bobby which group of eggs you should buy. That's looked at as one complete question to assess mathematical ability. Now, you can understand all the mathematics to get the first part right, but if I can't explain it and write a letter, it's going to show up that I struggle in math, when in fact, I don't struggle in math. What I struggle in is the literacy and the ELA part. So, and it reminds me of, I think, the first year I was on the board, we had a discussion in the, in the Instruction Committee, I think Mrs. Breitman was the chair at the time, we talked about cursive writing, and whether we teach cursive. And I said, well, too, when I was in school, you know, I had to take, my spelling tests were in cursive. That was a way that you could learn your spelling, and it was a way to reinforce the handwriting. And the response we got from the instructional staff was, we don't do that anymore because we don't want a student's deficit in their ability to print and write in cursive to mask their ability to spell. I think we've got the same thing going on. And I, I don't say this as a way of saying it's your fault, this is the way the tests are written, and this is where education is going. But I would hope as, as we listen to student after student come and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I know we joke here, right, about, I tell them all to say math, right? I've never told any student what to say. In fact, the students, what I usually tell them, to tell you the truth, and you can ask them, is, the board members like it if you say read. But I think what we're seeing is there are an awful lot of young people who love mathematics. And I think some of them get discouraged when an ability in language which isn't quite as advanced in math ends up having their test results and scores indicate to their parents and to them, you're not really as good at math as you thought. So I don't say any of this as a way to, to ask you to fix it. I understand this is the way the assessments are written. But I would hope that it's something that our teachers, when they're working with kids, would help to try to identify, because if, there are some kids who are really bright in math, and I don't want them discouraged the way many people who are better at math can be discouraged because they can't write a letter to their friend explaining which group of eggs to buy. So, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I, you know, when I saw this, that's what it said to me, and it connected with the discussion that we had had last fall. And that never happens for the student who's good in, in language. The student who's good in language never gets a, their score isn't lower because they're not good at math. And again, I understand, reading is the fundamental, and I'm, it's fundamental, and I'm not, I'm not denying that. But I hope we can be sensitive to that with our students as they're, as they're learning and being assessed in mathematics. Mrs. Fisher's going to come out of her chair. Go ahead.
Can you say that, the last part again, about the score in math because of, they're good in literacy, they're, what did you say?
No, I think he meant that their literacy score is not going to be decreased by a deficiency in math.
Right, that's exactly.
It doesn't work in reverse.
Okay. Because I had good literacy skills, but I was lousy in math.
That's right. But, but you can still be recognized for having great literacy skills. Whereas if somebody is great in math, but they struggle with literacy, they're not going to be recognized as much for the great ability in mathematics because they can't write the letter to their friend.
Well, the only problem is, how do we fix that? Because that's what, that's what the tests are making them do. How do we fix that?
That's why I asked all the questions when we had the PARC assessment discussion.
How do we fix that?
I don't know that it's something that anybody in this room can fix.
And that's what we're creating.
It's been going on for quite some time. I mean, this is, this is the way we've been assessing students for, as long as I can remember, when we've had something other than multiple choice. When we started going back, MISPAP, prior to MSAs. Students had to write constructed responses and justify their responses.
On math problems.
On math problems. So, no, it's, it's not a new issue by any means, and I, I don't know how we solve it.
That may, was, was that also the case in high school math? Because I don't remember that.
I don't think it's huge on HSA, but it's going to be on PARC.
Oh, yes, but it, but it wasn't, was it? Weren't they, in high school, really sort of separated? It was more the knowledge of the subject as opposed to whether you could write about the subject, even social stuff.
They're very brief, constructed responses, and they're not graded based on, I don't think the grade, if, of all the math is right, you probably get the credit, but I don't know that that's true in PARC. I think in PARC, they are going to suffer in their math scores if their language is holding them back.
Mrs. Fisher?
I'll probably get shot for saying this.
Oh, dear.
Since the time my own son was in first grade, I have been diametrically opposed to social promotion. I think that might be part of an answer to your problem. Don't pass them if they haven't obtained the literacy level that they should by the end of each grade.
Are there other comments? Okay. Good discussion.
Thank you. You always seem to bring out the excitement in the board. Somehow, whenever you show up.
That brings us to personnel action.
Which is hardly ever exciting, so just bring it back down. Dr. Heidings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed today in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve personnel actions recommended by staff?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Breitman, seconded by Mr. Bailey, to approve personnel actions. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passed, it's seven to zero, and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the legislative briefing. Ms. Cade and Mr. Traut.
Thank you very much. I've learned a lot today, listening to all the discussion that's been going on. I'm Artic Cade, and providing the legislative update. We have only six more days until the end of the session, known as Sine Die, midnight next Monday. But there is still a lot going on. Much of the most important actions have already been taken, but what we always watch for and are seeing this year are those things that have been sitting still. They've been heard in a committee, nothing's happened, and then suddenly, those bills are starting to move. And I will speak to one of those in a minute. I'd like to start with the budget. The budget has been passed by both houses, but now we are in what they call Conference Committee, where the differences in the two houses are negotiated out. The fact is that the education budget has done fairly well, and at, pretty much as expected. We were discussing in Legislative Committee that Mrs. Breitman chairs, what percentage of that budget really is from the casino revenue? Because, you know, people are always saying, oh, we can get it from the Education Trust Fund, all that money that's coming into casinos. Well, that money is really displacing some other money and freeing it up for other uses, but that money is only, is less than ten percent of the whole education budget. So it's important, but it isn't making life all that much easier. There's about two hundred and seventy-five million in for school construction, not as much as we hoped, but, but a significant amount. And there, as I have said in the report I gave to you, there, the feel-good budget, the feel-good item that the Senate put in was ten million dollars for filling potholes. Now, you know, when they start doing that, you know it's a feel-good budget. They reduced the amount of money that was going to go into the, basically the catch-up money for the pension program, and they did that with the concurrence of the unions and their understanding of why it was being done, in order to have money to do the things that the governor's budget had produced, and then compensate for a little shortfall in revenues. So that budget is really mostly a very comfortable budget this year. And the disparity grants, which we didn't have to argue for this year, they were in the budget as it was proposed, and Washington County's share goes up by four hundred and thirty-two thousand to a million nine seven eight two two three. So, but we'll be watching that again next year because they're going to be looking at all of those basic grant programs. But in the budget, one thing that has not been resolved is holding back some of the Maryland State Department of Education money. And the concept of holding that money back is to ask the State Department to answer a lot of the questions, just like you were asking, about PARC, about PARC administration, and scoring, and validation, how much it's really going to cost, what does the contract look like that's for that? And so, in one form of the budget, they withhold fourteen million dollars, another part of the budget, they hold a million dollars, and that may be consolidated into holding ten million instead, in order to really have the State Department of Education give clear information to the legislature about the costs and the, and the implications of all of these things about the PARC test. Now, the, Mrs. Breitman also was referring to a bill that is still not quite, you know, is kind of moving itself along with this, which would set up a legislative commission that would ask a million questions. I think there are fourteen charges that that commission would have, again, relating to PARC and how it relates to teacher evaluation and student graduation. That is a question that now has been put into the legislature, and they're seeing that if teachers aren't to be held responsible, I shouldn't say not be held responsible, that their evaluation not be reflecting PARC scores, that maybe student graduation requirements might be adjusted also relative to encountering new PARC testing. So that is still, of course, very up in the air. But, so that's kind of all working its way. But this is really to say that the legislature had about thirty bills in about, about PARC and, and evaluation and so forth. And they really have kind of come to the middle, and they have the same concerns, I would say, that you have, and that PARC is a good thing, and that PARC standards are a good thing, and that it's a bumpy road that we're in right now, and we're, we have to take into account that bumpiness for both students and teachers, but we have to be moving ahead as, as, as it's been defined. So I think that you can feel that you've been well represented by your legislators in that regard. Our biggest loss has been the prevailing wage bill. This had to do with how much, what percentage of a, of a school construction project, if funded by the state, by, the law had said by fifty percent by the state or more, that then you had to use prevailing wage. And you are very, have been very susceptible to this. The state will pay seventy percent of some of your costs, but not for the architects. You pay all of that, and for the furnishings, you pay all. So in many of your projects, you're around fifty percent state-funded. Well, in fact, we used in the testimony, Rob Rollins' chart, which showed very clearly, when you bid Bester School, it was eighteen million not prevailing wage, twenty million using prevailing wage. And so you were able to award that at eighteen million, and, because you were using just less than fifty percent state funding. The legislature has now lowered that to twenty-five percent state funding. So in almost every case now, you will have to use prevailing wage. We put up a real battle. Mako and Mabe together were at the table, and were talking to legislators, and first protected it at forty instead of fifty percent. But then the administration people and the president of the Senate's people But then the administration people and the president of the Senate's people got the committee to do a reconsideration, and it went back down to, it went down to 25%. That's, the winners in that bill are construction workers, whether they're union or non-union. The losers are the fact that you'll be able to, with the same amount of money, build less schools, and the, or the taxpayers will have to pay more to build the schools. So we worked hard, we did not succeed in that one. The fairness in negotiation, the Labor Relations Board has been made permanent, now the sunset was removed. But John Woolham's developed some fine language that requires now that they, that they have to, that they shall report to Senate Finance Committee and House Ways and Means on the Board's compliance with administrative procedures provisions and open meeting provisions. Because apparently, there have been a number of cases, pretty well documented, in which those have been violated. And that's certainly important, that those be complied with. Some things that we still oppose, that are still around, and right about now, the House Subcommittee is voting on the bill that would look at due process and whether the burden of proof is on the Board of Education or on the parents, or the party that brings the case. And we thought this bill had died, nothing had happened, for several weeks. And suddenly, the education Subcommittee Chairman had started to get huge pressure. And so there have been efforts over the last 10 days, five days, I should say, to go part way toward burden of proof being transferred by doing some amendments. Well, we've, we have commented on those amendments. Some of them are acceptable, some of them are atrocious. We will find out, I will find out when I get on the phone on the way home, what has happened with that. So, and, but that bill still has to go across to the Senate. So even if the House amends it, if the House adopts it in a way we don't like, it still could die in the Senate Committee, and we hope it will. I won't go into all of these. The non-recurring cost, which was a bill Mako put in, has not been moving. This year's boast provisions have, where they provide tax credits to companies or individuals that give money to certain nonprofits, that then give scholarships to mostly non-public schools, but some public schools. That concept comes in every year in a different form, and it has not moved this year. The school counselors bill is kind of fun, because, in fact, we testified against that just a few days ago, a crazy bill, no, I shouldn't say crazy, a bill that was very prescriptive in defining that, that there must be one school counselor for every 250 students in high school and in middle school, and that they must spend 80% of their time with, in student activity, with students, in student services. Well, this is like, you're, I mean, you are the ones who define your school system's needs, your school system's job description and so forth. And this bill moved through the House. And it, they changed a lot of it, not to, from shall to may, but they left in this provision at the end, that the State Board may, at their will, develop regulations to implement these requirements. Well, I mean, that, that still could be a huge expense, and fortunately, the bill was killed by the Senate Committee. It had gone through the House, went to the Senate, we testified loudly against it, and it was killed. So that makes you feel good, makes me feel good when that happens. The pre-K bill has passed. The bill that we objected to so strongly in the beginning, having to do with lease payments being, not being part of MOE, and how that affected your school-for-the-art lease, finally was amended, taking out that, really, taking that provision out, and really saying that the legislative services should do a study of alternative financing and public-private partnerships, and how those various things might relate to maintenance of effort. So we said that bill would be acceptable to us, and it, it's in the Senate Committee. It has not been voted out of committee. If it dies, it's okay, and if it passes, it's okay. So that one, we were able to, and a lot of work by your chairman, and the Quick Response Team, and Delegate Seraphini, to make sure that that bill did not go through in its original form. And I want to thank you all for all the work you did on that one. There was a question about open space money for, and the budget limits the amount of open space revenues, which come from transfer tax, to, that can be used now for open space programs at $100 million. And the rest can go into other uses. And there is a schedule in the budget, too, of how that will happen over the next few years. This can affect some recreational facilities and so forth, for which those have been used. So it may be something that we want to look at, again, next year. The Green Building Council that you asked about, Mrs. Brightman, is an administration bill that has moved pretty much clearly through the House and Senate, having, and not amended at all. So it's as the administration has asked for it. The educational stability, having to do with inquiry for children in juvenile court, on which we made a comment, that bill has passed as introduced. There's a bill that is probably going to pass that says that a school system may prohibit smoking on public properties. It's through the Senate, and it's been heard in the House. There'd be a $50 penalty for second offenses. It started out as a mandate bill, but for a change, they recognized that school systems ought to have some say in what they are allowed and not allowed to do, and it has been made into a permissive bill. Last year, there was a huge bill to, huge bill to provide the ability for Baltimore City to build about $1 billion worth of new schools, with the state putting in part of the money, and that money being used for paying the bond payments and so forth. So, of course, the other big counties thought this was just a dandy idea, and so they came in with a bill, not the same, but it would require $20 million each year that they could use, these are systems over 100,000 students, that they could use to use for bond payment, for additional school construction, that they might want to do with other resources. And they also, that was, that included, I think, three more counties, and then there was a bill in with five more counties, and those were the ones that have fastest growth, and they're growth at more than 150% of the state average. And they, again, would, the state would set up a $20 million fund every year for them to do, get grants toward doing more schools. So those two bills fortunately have sat still. I watch them every day, because you just don't know until the last minute, when there's something that, there's some kind of a trade-off that might be called up at the very last minute. So there is still action, there's still a lot going on. It's been relatively a good year in that there hasn't, except for the prevailing wage bill, there really hasn't been anything that is truly negative for school systems. Delegates, having Delegate Seraphini be on the Education Subcommittee in Ways and Means is a great help, because he's there as, as we're discussing bills with the Subcommittee, and they are voting on things, as they may be at this very moment. And again, Jamie Brown and Tony Trotta are invaluable. Jamie updates things every day. With the Quick Response Team, who have done a marvelous job, Dr. Hardings, Mrs. Brightman, Tony, Mr. Trotta, excuse me, and the superintendent, we have submitted testimony, written testimony on 25 different bills this year. And that's far more than historically has happened. And I think that it is making the Washington County voice be heard louder than ever. And I think that it's a very important thing, that your voice be heard, and that we work hard in Annapolis. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cade. Questions from any members?
Just one follow-up.
Sure.
On the school construction for the larger counties.
Yes.
That $20 million per county, would that come out of the $275 million pool, or is that money additional?
No, I think it's additional. I think I read it as additional.
A separate pool of money.
It's a separate pool of money. But
That's concerning.
It's still, it's still, it's still very bad legislation. It's very unfair, and
There's huge equity and
Yeah, and there's really the whole movement now toward re-looking at Thornton. And there'll be the contract to start doing all the data, that will then be used to determine equity and so forth. And so that sort of benefit should not be allowed in, as that Thornton
It's supposed to be one Maryland, isn't it?
One Maryland, yes.
Yeah, I've heard that before somewhere.
I'm particularly glad that the school counselor bill looks like it's going to fall apart. And it's not, for me, it's not just about the counselors. If the legislature can tell us how many counselors we have to have per student, why shouldn't they be able to tell us then how many teachers we have to have per student, or students per teacher, or how many students we can have in one classroom, or
That's right.
What we ought to have our teachers, or principals, or anybody else in the school system doing on a day-to-day basis? I think that's
It was a very bad bill.
If the legislature starts that, then I
We're all out of business.
I don't know why we would even be here.
But it did move
If anything is local, it should be
Even though it got amended and made it less horrendous, it did move through the House. I mean, it, the fact was that some people still thought it was a pretty good idea. Now, we all, you all probably feel it would be great to have more school counselors. But you have to weigh that against every other priority you have, every other concern you have. So, yes, thank you. I was glad, I was excited that it was
Thank you for your work on it. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Cade.
Next time I'm here, I will be giving the follow-up report from the end of the session.
We look forward to that.
No surprises until Monday.
Hopefully.
The benediction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Postmortem. That brings us to Board Member Committee Reports. Mrs. Hirschman, curriculum?
Curriculum and instruction met March 25th in the Board Conference Room. We discussed some, the summer literacy program, and how that may be changed over this summer program, and how it would be improved. We also will be meeting April 22nd, Tuesday, at 11:15 in the Board Conference Room, and everyone is invited to attend.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirschman. Mrs. Williams, finance?
Yes, the Finance Committee has not met since our last Board meeting. We do have a meeting coming up on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 3:30, and we're meeting in the Finance Conference Room.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, Policy Review and Development?
Earlier, we dealt with Policy BG, BK, Student Discipline. We had spent some time making some changes of that and wrapping it up for presentation today. We also managed to get through, finally, the remainder of the policies from Section B, which had been recommended for our consideration, and the review of that big policy book continues, though. We also decided to put Policy BJ on the business meeting tonight under Miscellaneous Business to determine whether the Board members would prefer that this be in practice, or it continue to be in policy. And it's coming up here in a few minutes, I guess, for our discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
We will meet April the 9th at 1:45.
Mr. Bailey, Facilities?
Yes, Mr. President, the Committee met on March 25th, and we began with our usual updates, and construction particularly. Bester Elementary School is on schedule. Completion date is approximately April 19th, and we're going to have our next meeting at the Bester Elementary School. West City is progressing as expected, and we also listened to comments and questions regarding the 2005 APFO and excise tax agreement with the county, and how it impacts the Board. We're going to keep an eye on that and watch what happens regarding the excise tax. Chad Criswell gave us a presentation on pupil generation rates, and again, how the housing developments in Washington County are generating increased population for our schools. The Educational Facilities Master Plan is in its final stages and must be submitted to the state near the end of June. The FEAC Committee is, has been active, and will more than likely report to the Board its progress report in June. That's not absolutely certain right now, but it looks like that's when that will happen. And again, we're reviewing all policies, Board policies pertaining to facilities, and have moved several along to the Policy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Ridenhour, Human Resources?
Yes, the HR Committee met last Tuesday, a very short meeting. We did get a little update from our, our staff in regards to HR and personnel policies that have been sitting around in one way or another. Some are, you know, definitely out of date, need updating or removal. Our staff will be coming back to us with some suggestions and recommendations in regards to those policies that may need to be changed, those policies that may need to disappear. And we'll go from there at that point in time. We will meet April 29th, again, at 10 o'clock in the HR room, the HR Conference, yeah, that's the word, Conference Room.
You sure it's the 29th? You sure it's the 29th? That's the fifth Tuesday.
Whatever, what's the fourth Tuesday?
Oh, that's the fifth, so it'll be the 22nd.
22nd is the fourth.
Off state, thank you.
Thank you. Is there naval legislative or Board of Directors, any reports from there?
We've heard two robust legislative reports today, so I won't repeat any of that. The Legislative Committee meets for the last time this session in a wrap-up on April 28th.
And from Mabe, conference planning, your report today? Student Government?
Student Government was scheduled to meet this morning to elect a student intern. That meeting has been rescheduled to the 8th of April, it's a Tuesday, still same time, 9:30 at Tech High School, which, I mean, I guess that's kind of nice, because that means you guys can come rather than being here all morning. So you guys are, of course, all invited to attend. We'll be electing our student member of the Board intern position, so they will eventually fill this position two years from now.
Great, thank you. Any other Committee Reports of any sort? Great, that brings us to Miscellaneous Business, a discussion about Policy BJ. Mrs. Fisher gave us a brief introduction in Mrs. Fisher gave us a brief introduction in her Committee Report. Do you want to tee up a question here for the group?
The question that was brought up at Policy was whether or not this should actually be in policy. Should it dictate to all future Boards that they must belong to both the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and the National School Boards, excuse me, Association? And so we decided to open that discussion up to the entire Board because there were varied opinions on it within our own Committee.
So any, any input from Board Members?
Mr. President, I think I, with long experience on the Board, have benefited from both of those professional organizations. I think the Mabe Group, we, we do our insurance through Mabe, and that's an important piece, along with their professional development that they provide. And on the national level, the, I've attended numerous National Education Associations, conventions, and of course, they're all very well-done and have much to offer, particularly a new Board Member. So I, I like the idea of retaining those two professional groups.
Okay. I think the question, well, I'll let members speak. I won't, I won't.
I mean, I'd be more than happy to speak. Well, Mabe is, is, for all intents and purposes, they're our employee. We hire them. We pay them a certain amount of money to provide services. Like any other employee or any other group that we retain, it's my opinion that we should have an opportunity to make a determination, are they best serving our interests? If it's on, in policy, there is a large window of time between us deciding, well, this group isn't helping us, and finally being able to get rid of them. So to me, membership in Mabe and the National School Board Association is a best practice that we can determine each year whether or not we want to continue. If we don't feel that they're serving our needs, if we can do better in the insurance group, then we should be able to do it. Policy now dictates we have to use them. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think we should be able to make the determination as a Board on a yearly basis. Dr. Hardings went down, I remember, this year and made some arguments and discussed, as a member of the Fundations Committee with, of Mabe, about their due structure, which it worked out well. But if it hadn't worked out, you know, we still would have had to join no matter what the cost was. So I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with being mandated to, to hire a certain group to do certain things. And our membership, for all intents and purposes, that's what we're doing. So my position would be to rescind this, continue as needed and as desired to utilize these organizations and the benefits of those organizations, but as a Board each year, you know, whether it's this group or another group in the future, have the opportunity to make a determination whether or not those are the groups they want to continue to utilize. So I would vote to rescind.
Hello. Mrs. Williams?
Yes. I would hope that we would want to continue to be a part of the larger state community of Boards of Education. I would hope that we would want to continue to be a part of the national community of Boards of Education. So I would like to see us maintain this policy. I think that it's important that we do codify our participation in those two organizations by having a policy. I think policy is a form of institutional memory. It would let new Boards know what past Boards have valued and what they want to see continued. And I don't think new Boards should have to be continually reinventing the wheel each time an issue or an opportunity arises. So I, again, I would like to see us maintain this policy.
Mrs. Hirschman?
Well, I, too, would like to see us maintain the policy because I think we should be working as a unit in the state. The larger the group, obviously, the more power you have when issues come up. I like the idea of the networking. I take part in many of the professional development activities, and I know many people from many different Boards around the state. And it's always a very interesting conversation at any of the workshops and to find out what's going on in their communities. In fact, I'm in the process right now of going to Calvert County, setting up a date for several of the people at the Board and in Administration to go to Calvert County to see a minority program that they have there that I was just blown away with at the State Convention. It was absolutely fantastic, and I would love to see it instituted here. Also, as Mr. Bailey said, the insurance. We just had an instance where we ended up owing money on a, an insurance file and claim, and so I don't see how we can do without things like that. We also received a current Board Member Program that Mabe has offered to come to the county and discuss with all the prospective Board Members and/or the new Board Members when they are elected. And I think that is an invaluable service, too. I know that when I came on the Board, that was basically all I had, was what Mabe told me was happening as far as a Board Member goes. And I could not have done work at the beginning without it. So I would hate to see us pull away from them. I think it would show a lack of confidence, and I have all the confidence in the world in them. So I would not like to see this rescinded.
Other comments? Mrs. Bright?
And I appreciate the, the PR for Mabe. I've been involved with Mabe since almost the beginning of my service on the Board, and I agree, it's very valuable. I don't think what we're looking at today is a question of value and participation. I think that is a given. I think we all agree on that. I look at it a little bit differently. We've just spent considerable time writing a new policy on Policy BG. And as that policy is written, I'm not sure that BJ fits within the definition of a policy. When I look at this, what is the enforcement mechanism? If the next Board decides that they don't agree with an issue, one of the resolutions, continuing resolutions of Mabe, I just see this as really not rising to the level of a policy and, much more important, that it be a best practice. There's a line item in our budget for memberships. There's the opportunity for discussion. We vote and discuss the budget on a yearly basis. So the mechanism is there to protect the membership and the value of our membership, but again, put it in, I think it's right place, which would be a best practice.
Mrs. Fisher?
I just wanted to add that I don't think anybody had any intentions of not belonging to Mabe. At this time, Mabe seems to be the biggest issue here. But again, whether or not this was appropriate in policy, and we are, of course, trying to reduce the policy book, was another, that's why this is a B policy. We just work through the Bs, trying to cut down the policy book. But there was no intention of trying to break away from Mabe. I think we all acknowledge how valuable it can be.
I tend to agree with Mrs. Brightman and Mr. Ridenhour. I, too, see great value in what Mabe does and serve on a number of their Committees and have worked with quite a few of them. I think they do a very, very good job of trying to ensure that, as the Executive Director says, that their work is member-driven. They try to be very sensitive to the needs of the big school districts, the small counties. And I think they've done very well at that. Doesn't mean they always will, but certainly they have recently, and I certainly support continuing to be Members and be very active with them. One of the phrases that really bothers me in the policy is it says, "There will be Members of Mabe and NSBA, and it shall endeavor to promote and further their objectives." I'm not sure what that means. I mean, there's some objectives Mabe has that may have passed it as a resolution that I may not agree with and that this Board may not agree with. So I think I'm not crazy about that language. I also, just as a matter of policy, don't like putting into policy what groups we're going to belong to. I mean, we're Members to the Chamber of Commerce. I think we have a great partnership with the Chamber. We are Members of the Lobbying Coalition. I think that's been a good membership for our organization. There are lots of other School Board-related Committees. There are associations of urban school districts. There are associations of rural school Boards. I just think we ought to choose the organizations that we want to be a Member of without, without putting in a policy. But again, that hasn't, says nothing about my enthusiasm for all the great things that Mabe or NSBA might do, but that's, that's my point of view on it. Other comments? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to say that this policy was adopted in 1974, amended in 1977, amended again in 1989. This Board will not always be Washington County School Board. So I think that it's important that we look to the future and think possibly of what other Boards would value. I think by having this policy, we show our intent, we show our belief, and again, I say that I hope that we would want to have as a belief that we would like to be a part of the larger community of Boards of Education nationally and statewide.
Mrs. Hirschman?
And I, too, do agree with that. And I think that, that too many of our policies have disappeared with a promise of maybe being addressed later and never come back around. So I would hate to see this go out and then someone just decide that we didn't want to bother joining, didn't want to pay that, and it would just be struck through on the line budget. So I would like to see this remain as a policy.
Any other comments? Mrs. Fisher, do you feel like you have the direction that you need based on the discussion we've had?
I feel this Board is very split. I guess we'll just have to go back to policy and discuss it.
Okay. Great. That brings us to future agenda items. I had you just a moment ago, and then I'll put down. Had a discussion a little earlier about whether standing committees might start giving regular reports to the School Board. I think we hear from the Budget Advisory Review Committee, maybe it's Word, this was the discussion we had earlier. Having, once a year, each of our standing review, standing Committees come and report to the Board, so that's a discussion that will be ongoing. We'll have a discussion at the April 15th meeting on summer school plans, a large discussion of all the various plans that we have going on for summer school. Those are the only highlights that I wish to, I guess, highlight right now.
The 22nd?
I think, yeah, that's all. We'll move to Board Member Comments. Mr. Grinndike?
Nothing.
Mrs. Hirschman?
I'd just like to, again, congratulate all the award winners that we handed medals out to today. It was very supportive and nice of the Board to give them the medals, and it was extremely wonderful that they had won them. They were very good examples of the kinds of students that we have in our schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, again, congratulations to our student athletes and scholars. It's one of the best parts of the job for me is to see those students recognized for their accomplishments. I'd like to wish Jessa a very happy birthday.
Mrs. Bright?
No comments, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing today.
Mr. Bailey?
Again, the Superintendent highlighted the academic success of our athletes, and I think that's always good going forward.
Mr. Ridenhour?
No.
I have nothing either, and that brings us to the end of the agenda. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.